I'd like to call this council meeting to order. Joining me in council chambers is Ms. Thompson, Chief Administrative Officer, Mr. Defoe, City Clerk. Mr. Bytes is here, but he might join us, City Communication Lead. And Ms. Mockler, Director of Human Resources, is also in chamber. Mayor Matheson and Counselor Beatty give their regrets. If I could all ask us all to join together in a moment of silent reflection. Thank you. So item two is declarations of pecuniary interests. Any to declare? Counselor Vassilakis?
Item 7.1, it shouldn't come up, but just in case it comes up, under our grant Cycle Stratford, I have an interest in that I am involved with their annual event. I don't know if it's going to come up, but I might as well declare it.
Okay, thank you very much, Counselor Vassilakis. Any others? Seeing none. Item three is the adoption of minutes. And there is a an item there that the minutes of regular council meeting dated June 22, 2020, and special meeting dated June 26 and June 29, 2020, that these minutes of the Council of the Corporation of the City of Stratford be adopted as print. Mover for that? Counselor Burback, second by Counselor Gaffney. Any discussion? All in favor? Opposed of any, and that's unanimous. Moving down to item four, there are no addenda for today's meeting. So we'll move to item number five, a report of the committee of the whole in-camera session. And 5.1, at the July 6, 2020 session, under the Municipal Act 2001 as amended, matters concerning the following items. Are we all right? The following items were considered. One, personal matters about an identifiable individual, including municipal employees or local board employees. Number two was advice that is subject to solicitor-client privilege, including communications necessary for that purpose. And at that July 6 in-camera session, direction was given on both matters. The committee of the whole in-camera session held earlier today, July 13, prior to this meeting, a matter concerning the following item, personal matters about an identifiable individual, including municipal employee or local board employee, and advice that is subject to solicitor-client privilege, including communication necessary for that purpose. And no direction was given. Item six, hearings of deputations and presentations, none are scheduled. Moving down to item seven, orders of the day. And item 7.1, with regards to the 2020 community grant appeal recommendation, there is a recommendation that Sharon Morris, on behalf of the Feline Friends, be heard. A mover for that, Counselor Seven, second by Counselor Bunting. All in favor? And that's unanimous. Are you with us, Sharon, Ms. Morris?
Yes, I am, thanks very much. And I'm also here together with our Treasurer, Jamie Lammend, who will help me.
Welcome, and go ahead.
Okay, well, thank you so much for the opportunity to speak today. Just, I'll give a brief recap and explanation of what Feline Friends is and does. And Jamie will go over some figures and numbers for you. And I'll speak again just very briefly before we're done. So Feline Friends is all about spaying and neutering to reduce the cat overpopulation problem in Stratford and Perth County. We've fixed over 2,900 cats since we began 14 years ago. Stratford has a cat overpopulation problem. We get many requests to help city residents with homeless cats that turn up on their property or in their neighborhood. Most are concerned because the cats may be starving, sick, injured. They need food, shelter, and medical treatment. Cats multiply very quickly, as I'm sure you know. So they become problematic for citizens who either think of them as a nuisance because unsterilized cats have problematic behaviors such as roaming, spraying, fighting, heat cycles, et cetera. Or more often is the case, citizens are just concerned, and so they contact us. We find ourselves providing some animal control within the city. And a common comment from residents is that they have contacted the Humane Society, but they were told they couldn't provide assistance. We had 80 requests about strays in Stratford in 2019. Feline Friends exists because there's a need to do more humanely to prevent the birth of unwanted litters of kittens that end up homeless or in the shelter. It's a problem everywhere. If you don't have aggressive spay-neuter programs in a community, you will have homeless cats. So we began practicing trap-neuter-return, or TNR, of feral cats, meaning unsocialized cats, not friendly to humans. TNR is a proven method to return sterilized cats to their outdoor homes, be cared for, they live out their natural lives, and don't reproduce. And so over time, their numbers drop. In more recent years, we're seeing that by far, the majority of homeless cats and kittens we take into our spay-neuter programs are not feral. They are scared, traumatized, but friendly. And so our emphasis has shifted to working with them in foster homes and preparing them for adoption. It takes a lot of volunteer time and a lot of veterinary costs as the cats frequently need medical care in addition to spay-neuter surgery. All of the cats we adopt out are spayed or neutered first. We have a low-income spay-neuter assistance program because a significant factor that keeps people from fixing their cats is the cost. Unsterilized pets inevitably contribute to more kittens to the community. The House of Blessing and Salvation Army assess applicants for us, and for those who qualify, Feline Friends covers the cost of spay-neuter surgery for up to two cats per household per year. Our low-income program is different from that of the Humane Society. Ours is free while there's cost residence $95 to $110, which is still a significant barrier for some people. Also, cats don't observe city limits. There is a relationship between homeless cats in the city and in other parts of the county. Cats and kittens are frequently abandoned at farms by people from the city who mistakenly think they can look after themselves. Kittens from the country are often adopted by people in the city because they're abundant and they're free, but unfortunately, they're not fixed. This is why we include barn cats in our trap-neuter-return program, to have a real impact on unchecked breeding that affects city and rural areas. Now over to Jamie, who'll give you some figures about our programs and expenses.
Hello, I thought I would just highlight some financial notes about Feline Friends. So a majority of our revenue comes from fundraising that we do, adoption fees that we charge for cats we adopt out, and then we do get a lot of donations in. We provide TNR services, which we do request service via $25 per cat for that. We usually hold a wine raffle every year, which nets us about $8,000 to $9,000. And that's one of our big fundraisers, but we did have to cancel that for 2020. We're still a fairly small organization. We only bring in about $100,000 in revenue a year. And in 2019, we spent about $90,000. About 75% of our expenses goes towards vet bills, so that's a big part of it. And then about 8% is mileage reimbursements for us having to drive back and forth to the vet. And then the rest of our expenses are, we do rent an apartment in Stratford that some of our adoptable cats or cats that we're working on to socialize, we keep them there. And then we have our other insurance office and stuff that makes up the rest. In 2019, we spayed and neutered 321 cats that entered our program. 110 went through our low-income program, which Sharon had mentioned. We spay-neuter for low-income families that meet a threshold up to a max of two cats. And they don't have to pay, we cover the spay-neuter cost. So 71 of those came from Stratford, so that would be about an estimation of $7,400. And 70 cats entered our TNR program, of which 47 was within Stratford. So that would be an approximate cost of about $4,700. And then Sharon mentioned, we did have 80 calls from Stratford about strays, of which 54 cats entered our program, and 47 of those we ended up adopting. And then we had another 19 that were just within the city limits. So it costs us on average to spay and neuter about $90 to $150 per cat, depending on which vet we use. And a lot of our cats that come in have extra medical needs on top of their regular spay-neutering costs that most of them that come in are not spayed and neutered. And yeah, so I'm going to give back to Sharon.
Okay. So just in summary, the value that Feline Friends provides to Stratford residents includes reducing cat-related complaints, preventing an unmanageable overpopulation of cats in the city, saving the Humane Society costs by reducing the number of cats and kittens that it must respond to and provide care for, lowering the cost of animal control within the city by preventing unwanted litters and addressing cat-related requests, helping low-income Stratford residents who could not otherwise afford to spay or neuter their cats, and reducing the number of cats that are discarded and abandoned as pets due to the undesirable behaviors that spaying and neutering resolves. We've earned a reputation as a caring, compassionate organization that provides a valuable service to Stratford residents. And I just want to add that due to the pandemic, our income is down, but we predict that the need for our services will increase. Our vet clinics postponed all but emergency spay and neuter surgeries for several months. And that's a significant setback to our attempts to control overpopulation because even more litters of homeless kittens will be born into our community than in pre-pandemic times. While the vets are now doing surgeries again, we have a lot of catching up to do. And at the same time, as Jamie mentioned, we had to cancel our largest annual fundraising raffle because we feel we can't ask local businesses for donation prizes because they've been significantly impacted economically, and we can't safely sell raffle tickets person to person. We're a small, very small local charity, and we're asking for your help so we can continue serving the citizens of Stratford. Thank you very much for listening.
Thank you very much for the overview. Are there any questions from council? Seeing none, thank you very much, again, ladies, for presenting.
Thank you.
So moving forward here, there is a there is a recommendation before you from the Community Grants Evaluation Committee. And that recommendation is that the Gallery of Stratford 2020 Grant Appeal Request in the amount of $22,000 towards the cost of an architectural feasibility study be denied, that the Feline Friends Network 2020 Grant Appeal Request be approved in the amount of $4,500 to assist with the costs related to the spay-neuter and foster adoption programs conducted within the city of Stratford for the benefit of Stratford residents, and that no further grants be awarded in 2020, and that any remaining funds in the 2020 community grant budget at the end of the year be used to assist with the city shortfall related to COVID-19. Counselor Gaffney, you're going to move that, and second by Counselor?
I'll move the recommendation, Mr.
Thank you, moved by Counselor Gaffney, second by Counselor Henderson. Questions or comments? Counselor Burback? Are you able to, there you go?
Sorry, yeah, I'm using a different computer today. Thank you. I was wondering if we could possibly take the two grants separately? So have the Gallery of Stratford one and the Feline Friends Network one? So I had a question about, well, a comment about the Gallery of Stratford one, and also a question about the Feline Friends Network amount. So maybe I'll begin with the Feline Friends Network. I'm just curious as to why the amount of 4,500 was selected. I certainly think that they do deserve our support. And I was just wondering how that number came to be.
Thank you. Counselor Vassilakis, as a member of that committee, do you want to address that?
Yeah, I was going to say, what we often have done with groups that service both Stratford, St. Mary's, and Perth, or a combination of, is come up with the amount that is usually equivalent to what we do in shared services for organizations, and then ask that those organizations then also solicit or get grants from the other municipalities that are getting services. And it's one of the ways to encourage the other municipalities to participate in the services that are being provided by those organizations. We found that it's been fairly successful in the past if those organizations go and say, well, you know, Stratford has given their equivalent, that they would, and it's roughly, it's roughly 45, 46% that Stratford usually contributes to shared services amongst the three municipalities. So that's how we came up with that.
Thank you, Counselor Vassilakis. Any other questions? Counselor Burback?
So should I bring forward my concern now about the Gallery of Stratford request? Is that, or can we separate the two?
We can certainly separate it out for you if you wish. I'm looking at, perhaps, to address your concerns is perhaps, and I looked to the clerk as well for some direction on this, but perhaps if we can look at, I think it's been, I think all three have been moved, but certainly if we can look at that the City of Gallery 2020 Grant Appeal Request in the amount of 22,000 towards the cost of an architectural feasibility feasibility study be denied, if we could call the question on that piece. And I'm looking for guidance from our clerk, yes, and we're fine with that. So any other discussion or comments on that piece, Counselor Burback?
Yes, so Gallery of Stratford was asking for some extra funding so that they could do an architectural feasibility study. And they were able to secure a grant for $22,000 that would go towards the $50,000 architectural feasibility study. I really do think that there's a lot of value in going ahead with the feasibility study. However, they will not receive the $22,000 grant if they can't have, they can't find matching funds for it. So I just think that because Gallery of Stratford is housed in a city building, that it would be wise of us to make a plan to go ahead with some sort of upgrade to that building. If we don't, we already know that the HVAC system doesn't work well. So soon, the building isn't really going to be functional. So I think it does, it's a wise time to make some plans about how that building will be used going forward. And I think this is a way that the city can actually get funds from other sources through grants in order for us to go ahead with those plans. So it would be my recommendation that we would go ahead with at least a portion of that grant to be approved. And the other challenge, of course, the gallery's had, along with everyone else, is that their fundraising basically was what stopped. So they were originally thinking that they could fundraise the other $22,000, but the gala was canceled, and so fundraising, of course, has been a struggle. So I would like to suggest that we think about at least a portionate or a full amount that they've requested, that we would be able to provide that to the gallery.
So I have Counselor Seven, Counselor Vassilakis, and Counselor Ingram in that order. Counselor Seven?
Thank you, I think Counselor Vassilakis is going to follow. I just wanted to hear the rationale from the committee for the decision that's on the motion. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Seven. Counselor Vassilakis?
Oh, I was just going to make a comment that one of the original reasons for turning this down is that we allow one grant application per granting agency. And so it fell outside of the rules for it because Gallery of Stratford already receives, actually, one of the largest grants that we actually provide to community organizations. And so that was one of the concerns, is that if we're making exceptions for the granting rules that we've set out, and we've been very clear about, that can be problematic because there are lots. I think the thing is, if you look at the list of organizations that ask for funding, there are a lot of them in the same position this year that could use some extra funding. And so going outside of the rules that we've set out is a problem. The other issue that we had was in looking at the feasibility study. The feasibility study isn't just a building condition assessment. They are, this gallery already has that. The feasibility study goes well beyond just looking at how to repair that building. It actually looks at a number of different capital project possibilities, including moving to a different site, creating a whole new building. And so it really felt like that in the year of COVID, $22,000 can be a lot of money for an organization, and spending the money for a feasibility study for something that falls sort of well outside of the scope of what's currently a city building and city facility, just didn't seem like the timing was right for something like that or the scope of what that feasibility study was looking for. And so those are sort of two of the reasons of our rationale for it, for not approving it.
Thank you, Counselor Vassilakis. Counselor Ingram?
Thank you, my question was just answered.
Thank you. Any other questions? Counselor Burback?
Yeah, I can understand the reasoning. I would point out, though, that the feasibility study is specifically for that building on Romeo Street. It wasn't for outside sites. It would be for an expansion of that building, but only to be used on that site. So, or not to build a new building. I mean, they came up with various ideas, but from what I understand, it's been narrowed down to specifically for the expansion of that building.
That wasn't, I was just going to say, that wasn't reflected in the documentation of what was sent through about what the scope of the feasibility study would be.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments? There is a motion on the floor that the that the request be denied. If there's no further questions, I will call that question. All in favor of that motion? Opposed of any? One opposed, and that's carried. I'm going to move down to the middle of the total committee recommendation. And that piece is that the Feline Friends Network 2020 Grant Appeal Request be approved in the amount of $4,500 to assist with the costs related to spay-neuter and foster adoption programs conducted within the city of Stratford for the benefit of Stratford residents. And that's been moved and seconded, I believe. Counselor Gaffney?
A question, Mr. Chair. Does this include the closing of the grants for this year?
I was going to take that as a third item because I thought there was going to be some more discussion with regards specifically to the Feline Friendly Friends. So that's what I was going to take separate.
Okay, thank you.
Yep. So any discussion with regards to the grant appeal for the Feline Friends? Seeing none, I will call the question. All in favor? Opposed, and that's unanimous, thank you. And the final piece that is part of that total recommendation, that no further grants be awarded in 2020, and that any remaining funds in the 2020 community grant budget at the end of the year be used to assist with the city's shortfall related to COVID-19. Any discussion on that piece? Counselor Vassilakis, and then Counselor Bunting?
And I just want to sort of point out that one of the ideas behind, or one of the rationale behind this is that the municipalities are still waiting for any support from the province and the feds in being able to handle our operating grants. But at the same time, both the provincial and federal governments have given a fair amount of money to the Community Foundation and to the United Way to distribute to community groups that could be doing work around COVID. And so if there are any community groups looking for funds, there is the availability of funds in the community for some of that work. And so we didn't want to leave out any groups that might be running into trouble. But at the same time, there is some money from upper levels of government being made available to those other granting agencies.
Thank you. Counselor Bunting, and then Counselor Henderson?
My points were just covered by Counselor Vassilakis, so I'll pass.
Thank you, Counselor Bunting. Counselor Henderson?
Well, I'm not quite sure if it was covered or not, but I have concerns because we still have five and a half months to go to the end of the year. And if some group comes forward, that's, you know, sometimes they come to us in September, October, they want to do something, and they need some help. This sort of ties our hands unless we get, what, two-thirds majority to bring it back again?
Any other comments, questions? Counselor Seven?
I just had a question around the fund. And how much is it typically year to year? And how much do we sort of put into it annually as the budget? Or I'm just, I just want to make sure we're not going to be left with a real big shortfall for grants next year?
So perhaps, is Ms. Bernaz on the line? Janice, are you there?
Yes, I'm here.
Thank you.
Our grant budget is fairly healthy. It's about just over $900,000. So we've given out about $205,000 to these one-off grants. We've got $331,000 that are sort of multi-year grants, like the hospice. And then we have some additional fee waivers, et cetera, that takes it up to just over $900,000. We're looking at about $49,000 we haven't given out yet. If we give $4,500 to the Feline Friends, we're down to about $44,000 that plus from that $904,000.
Thank you. Counselor Gaffney?
And I think Counselor Seven might have been asking about next year. Next year is a whole different event. We'll be starting with a fresh number, so anything that's left this year is just going to go back into the general revenues.
Any other comments or questions? So there is a motion before you, or a recommendation before you. If there's no other questions, I will call the question. All in favor? Opposed of any, and that looks to be unanimous, and that's carried. Thank you. Moving on to 7.2, Movies Under the Star Parking Lot Edition Proposal. And I believe Craig Thompson is on the line. And there is a recommendation that we hear, Mr. Thompson, with regards to the movie Under the Stars Parking Lot Edition Proposal. Moved by Counselor Burback, second by Counselor Ingram. All in favor? And that's unanimous. Mr. Thompson, are you available?
I am, thank you very much.
Welcome. And the floor is yours.
I won't take up too much of everyone's time. I know it's precious. The management report is fairly detailed. So I'll just do a brief overview and answer any questions that council may have. So this is a big idea for Stratford's economic recovery, presented through the City Initiatives Committee and supported by Huron Perth Public Health. As most of you know, we've been offering free outdoor movies for three years in Market Square, which can't be done this year safely. And these parking lot movies would bring people across the region to Stratford for a safe experience, while also bringing business to local restaurants and shops who support the initiative. It also supports the Stratford Festival because we'll be offering weekly screenings, free weekly screenings once per week of Stratford Festival's HD film series. It also creates several new part-time jobs for students. And basically, it will give another sort of added value for people to come to Stratford for the next several weeks.
Thank you. Any questions for Mr. Thompson from council? Counselor Vassilakis?
I had a question with respect to, today, the province came out with its new guidelines for opening of Phase Three. And it set a limit of 100 people for outside events. And I'm just wondering, you have 100 vehicles, but I'm just wondering if you could just speak a little bit to what the limits are for social distancing and the number of people, and what your finances show? Because it occurs to me that if it's 100 people, that could be just 25 cars of four, or it could be 100 cars of one for outdoor events.
Thanks, Counselor Vassilakis, yeah. If you look further in If you look further into the stage three and the stage two, drive-ins are exempt from the public gathering exemptions because they are considered to be safely distanced because people are in their cars. Nevertheless, the cars under the drive-in exemption in Ontario are required to be one car width apart from each other. And so in mapping out the site survey for the location, which has three hundred spots, we allocated a hundred spots maximum, approximately a hundred spots for safe distancing of vehicles, which fits in with our business model for revenue.
Thank you.
Councilor Gaffney, then Councilor Clifford.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. On the, in the report, it mentions Craig, it mentions both the police services and the clerk's office having some concerns about losing that parking lot. And I asked because we've lost, or we're we're losing several parking spots in the core to accommodate the larger patios and stuff, and I I just wonder if we're trying to attract more people to downtown. If not having that, if that parking lot not being available might be a problem. Thank you.
Was that in a question or a statement?
Well, I I I meant it to be in the form of a question. Maybe, maybe I got that wrong, Mr. Chair.
I can, I can address that. So yes, that was a concern. And we addressed that because we're not taking up the entire parking lot. The police department and the city initiatives agreed that if we kept the area to the right of the screen, which is the behind the University of Waterloo and that parking area, as well as the area down past the YMCA towards the transit hub, there is sufficient efficient sufficient space for anyone who wants to park between the hours of seven and eleven or overnight, and there'll be signage to direct people to those spaces so that there is no impact. There'll still be two hundred spaces available during the movie and before and and after the movie, plus the three hundred during the day.
Okay, thank you, Craig.
Councilor Clifford.
Yeah, I was gonna ask Craig. If they're in their cars, you're okay, but I believe you have washrooms or hope to have portable washrooms and a concession stand. How do you propose to keep the distancing between people to have it safe?
So to clarify that, there is no concession stand. We are partnering with downtown restaurants and encouraging people to that take out food to bring to the movie theater and consume in their cars. The washrooms are being provided by the City Initiatives Committee under a separate budget. There'll be three women's and two men's, and there will be social distancing lineup markers for people to safely use the washrooms. And there's a program in place separately from our event to make sure that the washrooms are properly sanitized and maintained.
Thank you. Any other questions from council? Seeing none. Thank you, Mr. Thompson. So before I read the staff recommendation related to the movie Under the Stars Parking Lot, Mr. St. Louis or Ms. Jordan, are you available if you want to make any comments before the recommendation is is read?
Through you, Chair. I don't have any further comments.
Thank you. Councilor Vasilakos?
I just had a couple of questions for staff. Seeing as this is a city property, we don't have any liability liability issues associated with this. And a second part to my question could be, are there any additional costs to the city for staff time and things like that that you can foresee that aren't included in the money that's being requested from the the money that the task force has received?
So Mr. St. Louis or Ms. Jordan?
Through you, Mr. Chair. We will need a small agreement with Mr. Thompson to ensure that there is liability insurance. And at this point, I don't foresee any further costs.
Did I see another hand from Councilor Burbak? Thank you.
Thank you. Just a comment for staff about the washrooms. So there'll be five. Could one of the women's washrooms be a gender non-specific washroom that might be available to everyone?
Through the chair, I can certainly take that back when we locate the washroom. At this point, I don't know the answer.
Councilor Ingram, and then Councilor Vasilakos?
Thank you. So with the inclusion of the partnership between the restaurants in the core and the Mr. Mr. Thompson, is there going to be additional garbage recycling and perhaps a green bin or two placed around the parking lot? Because I can imagine that people will not be keeping all of their garbage inside their cars. And if there's food involved, then it'd be a great spot to include the green bin program as well.
Ms. Jordan or Mr. St. Louis?
Through you, Mr. Chair. We we can certainly put out some recycling and garbage. I'll check with the infrastructure to see if there's there'd be a green green bin program to be available.
Thank you, Councilor Ingram. Councilor Vasilakos, and then Councilor Henderson.
Just to follow up to Councilor Burbak's comment, if these washrooms are individual, like if they're like porta potties and stuff, there's no reason to designate them one gender or any gender, what's like, right? Because I mean, I don't know how many times you go to a concert and there's three for women and two for men, and there's none in the men and a lineup for the women's, et cetera. But if they're standalone washrooms, there's really zero reason to be designating them one way or the other.
Mr. St. Louis?
Oh, yeah, that would be correct. I've been to a few larger centers, and they don't, they don't distinguish washrooms. There's just a bank of them, and they're free for all.
Thank you. Councilor Henderson.
That's exactly what I was gonna bring up, just make them all neutral washrooms. Anybody can use them. And I believe he said there was gonna be at least one accessible one, right?
Mr. St. Louis?
Yeah, I'm not sure if I'm clear of what the ordering would be, but certainly, I'll make a note of that.
Thank you. Any other questions from council? So there is a staff recommendation that movie Under the Stars Parking Lot Edition organizers be permitted to use the Cooper Parking Lot and Grand Trunk Community Hub for driving screening as follows. And these are your your days. Every Tuesday to Sunday evening from July the fifteenth, twenty twenty to August the second, twenty twenty, from seven PM to eleven thirty PM. Every Tuesday to Sunday evening from August the fourth, twenty twenty, and August the sixteenth, twenty twenty, from six forty-five PM to eleven fifteen PM. And every Tuesday to Sunday evening from August the eighteenth, twenty twenty, to September the sixth, twenty twenty, from six thirty PM to eleven PM. Do I have a mover for that? A move by Councilor Burbak, second by Councilor Ingram. Thank you. Any discussion? Councilor Henderson?
I just, instead of it saying three washrooms for women and two for men, just say four regular washrooms and one accessible washroom.
So I'll allow Mr. St. Louis to take that back and 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 work with that. Thank you, Bonnie. Councilor Henderson, I appreciate it. Anything else before we call the question? Seeing none, it's been moved and seconded, all in favor. Opposed, if any, and that's unanimous. Thank you. Moving down to item seven point three, resolution, it's Community Income Tax Clinic. Once again, a very successful program again this year. I certainly want to thank the individuals involved, the companies involved in that. So there is a staff recommendation that the report on the annual Community Income Tax Clinic activities and outcomes be received for information, and that social services issue, a thank you to all businesses that are that offered and provided their support and services. I'm not sure if Ms. McElroy wants to add anything to that before we move in second. Ms. McElroy?
Thank you. Through your worship, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay. Yes, I, we, we did have the challenge of the onset of the pandemic during this time, but we were managed to still find alternative ways to service. Just a reminder that the Salvation Army, for those that still need their income tax done throughout the year, is still an available service for for residents that need it.
Thank you. And if I'm correct, was it a hundred and thirty-five appointments slots that were available, which is quite outstanding in the report?
Yes, through your worship, a hundred and thirty-five were booked. We had a hundred and eighty-six that were available.
Beautiful. Thank you very much for your work on that. A mover for that recommendation moved by Councilor Vasilakos, second by Councilor Henderson. Any discussion or questions for Ms. McElroy? Seeing none. Thank you again for that work. Seeing none, all in favor. Opposed, if any, and that's unanimous. Thank you very much. Moving down to seven point four, resolution, continued participation in the Built for Zero Canada campaign. And the staff recommendation reads that council authorized the Director of Social Services to enter into and execute a Built for Zero Canada Agreement between the City of Stratford Social Services Department and Canadian Alliance to End Homelessness. A mover for that, moved by Councilor Back, second by Councilor Ingram. Any discussion or comments? Ms. Brodinsky, are you on the line or Ms. McElroy, anything you want to add to that?
Through you, your worship. I'll let Ms. Grodzinski speak to it. She's on the line.
Thank you. Through you, your worship. We're really pleased with the participation that we've had with Built for Zero over the past few years. This has be, it may have recalled, this started as Twenty Thousand Homes Campaign, and it has morphed into Built for Zero Canada. It's operated by the Canadian Alliance to End Homelessness. And through that, we receive coaching and support in our efforts to end homelessness. This included the establishment of Equality by Name List last year, and now we are moving towards a coordinated access system. So we're looking forward to council's endorsement of continued participation.
Thank you. Thank you for your work on this. So I believe it's been moved and seconded. Are there any questions or any discussion? Seeing none. Councilor Henderson?
I just wanted to thank staff on all their work on this. It's pretty remarkable that there's very few communities across Canada that are participating, and that's a small city like Stratford is participating, and successfully. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Councilor Henderson. Seeing no other hands, all in favor. Opposed, if any, and that's unanimous. Moving down to item seven point five, resolution, programming and activity support in Stratford for individuals and family. And there is a staff recommendation that the report titled Program and Activity Supports in Stratford for Individuals and Families be received for information. Mr. Hernan, are you available if you want to make a comment? Or Mr. St. Louis?
I don't believe Mr. Hernan is on the line. I don't have any further comments other than what's in the report.
Thank you. A mover for that recommendation moved by Councilor Bunting, second by Councilor Ingram. Discussion or questions? Councilor Burbak?
Thank you. Yeah, just a question for Mr. St. Louis. Do you foresee any additional activities for families coming up in the next month or two? Are we looking at opening skating rinks or other other facilities in the city, especially now that we've moved into phase three? Are there any other programs up and coming?
Through you, Chair. I'm I'm not familiar with stage three just yet. But if stage three opens, recreation facilities, we'll be looking at offering drop-in programs at the Agriplex, that's the floor, the sport floor is still in. As it relates to arenas, we have had a conversation with our major users this week. And there's still some uncertainty on when they will be allowed to practice or to participate. Our plan is to bring a report to council, probably at the next council meeting, that will show the protocols for opening up our arenas. We have a tentative opening date of September.
That's great. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments? Seeing none, I will call the question. All those in favor. Opposed, if any, and that's unanimous. Thank you very much. Item seven point six, resolution, reopening of the indoor portion of the Stratford Farmers Market during COVID-19. And the staff recommendation is that the Stratford Farmers Market be allowed to reopen indoors at the Agriplex for food sales only, and there are six vendors, starting July the eighteenth, twenty twenty, from seven AM to twelve noon, ensuring that the Huron Perth Public Health Guidelines for Operating a Farmers Market Under COVID-19 Restrictions are followed. A mover for that, Councilor Gaffney, second by Councilor Clifford. Discussion or comments? Seeing none, I will call the question. All in favor? Opposed, if any, and that looks to be unanimous. Thank you very much. And and a big congratulations and thank you to the staff that are the city staff that are helping up at markets on Saturday morning. You're doing an amazing job, so thank you very much. Resolution seven point seven with regards to the proposed twenty twenty-one budget, schedule, and process. And Ms. Bernaz, if you're on on the line yet, yes?
Sorry, I I meant to ask ask something under the market when it's going to be open. I was talking to Angie from the Bingo Country, and they were wondering when they can get in to start cleaning. So if we're opening up for the market, will they be able to possibly start this weekend to get in cleaning in preparation for the bingo halls opening?
I will turn that over to Mr. St. Louis.
I would suggest that the manager make contact with our facility manager, Mr. Jim Bryson, and they can work out a schedule to to get in for a cleaning.
Thank you.
Thank you, Councilor Henderson. So moving back to seven point seven, I'm sorry I missed you there, Councilor Henderson. But moving back, Ms. Bernaz, did you want to give us an update with regards to the budget schedule and process for twenty twenty-one?
Yes, through the chair. So normally, this report would go to subcommittee, committee, and council. This year, it's gone directly to council. So we haven't scheduled a council meeting for discussions to get some direction and strategy from council members. We could start some of the discussions today, but we can also schedule an agenda item in for July twenty seventh council meeting, and that way it will give you a little more time to gather some of your thoughts and ideas. One of the things that's going to affect the twenty twenty-one budget is going to be our reserve funds. So this year, we could potentially be reducing some of the transfers to reserves, especially in parking. With the lost revenue, we budgeted just over nine hundred thousand to go to that reserve fund, which probably won't happen. So one thing to consider for twenty twenty-one is what to do with those reserve fund reductions and potentially making those up or not as part of the strategy for twenty twenty-one.
Thank you. Councilor Clifford, and then Councilor Ingram.
Yeah, I think it would be helpful if we had a wholesome discussion on July twenty seventh. I've been thinking about it, and I talked to the vice chair, but I think if all of council had a chance to contemplate, and we had some time on July twenty second, I think that would be extremely helpful. Obviously, if there's some ideas today, it's fine, but I, it is going to take some time, and I think all of council, including Eric Patheson was involved, it would be extremely helpful because it's going to be a very difficult twenty twenty-one with lots of challenges. So I, to take the time and to do it right, I think is very important.
Thank you, Councilor Clifford. Councilor Ingram, and then Councilor Vasilakos.
Thank you. And I'm gonna echo some of the comments that I make almost every year when it comes around to scheduling these meetings. But it would be really helpful if we spread them out over the days of the week because here at Stratford, the city center BIA and the library board all meet on Tuesdays. So I would be missing all of those meetings if all of these budget meetings are kept on Tuesdays.
Thank you. Councilor Vasilakos?
So I I echo the scheduling because a lot of us have meetings for other other council. So I echo the scheduling, because a lot of us have meetings for other council commitments, so it would be really nice to spread them out, so no one councillor misses, you know, a lot of these. I had a question, or maybe I really would like to have a fulsome discussion, but I think what would be really useful for council is if we could get staff to identify for some broad areas where we should be thinking about in terms of core services, in terms of what it looks like for reserve funds and what scenarios could look like. So if we had some parameters that we could be thinking about over the next month, that would be really useful. I think maybe, you know, even for some, you know, the newer councillors that haven't been through this process several times, but even for some of us that have been through it a number of times, it would be really great for staff to flag, you know, some areas that we should be thinking about, especially since this is going to be an unusual budget cycle. I don't know if that's possible, but that would be.
Thank you, and what I'll do is I'll invite our CIO for Ms. Thompson, and perhaps she can maybe walk us through the next step and a few of the nuances.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor Ritzma. Yes, as Counsel Vasilakos has identified, the 2021 budget process is going to be like no other budget process in recent history for municipalities across the country. And also, we are only partway through the year, so we don't have the full budget numbers at this time. But we will pull together this information for you, so that you've got some parameters. The other item that I just wanted to raise at this time is that we are in the midst of doing the service delivery review on our core services, and that is looking for ways to find efficiencies. At this point, we are on target, and we are hoping to have that report to you in early fall. So again, that will be a helpful document. It will include recommendations plus an implementation plan as to how to implement those recommendations. So you will have quite a fulsome package this year to deal with as you make those decisions. And I will say that CLT has already identified that what will be critical is determining the core service and our other service levels this year. We are in unprecedented times right now with the financial impact of the pandemic. This will not be a one-year effect. This will be longer term than that, and very prudent decisions will need to be made by council. And we want to have a fulsome package to you, so that you can make those critical decisions. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Thompson. So there is a staff recommendation that the report of the Acting Director of Corporate Services dated July 13, 2020, regarding the Proposed 2021 Budget Schedule and Process be received for information. That the Proposed 2021 Budget Schedule be endorsed, that council provide direction with regard to their targeted 2021 taxation impact of budget discussions, and that council provide staff with any specific capital projects, changes in service levels, or activities to advance the approved strategic priority goals they wish to be considered for the 2021 fiscal year. And I know there's we've referred back to staff with regards to perhaps some different dates other than that was discussed earlier. But certainly, our next step, if I understand through Ms. Beernas, is for the discussion to begin. And it's in an ongoing discussion at the next council meeting, July 27. And I'm looking at, I believe that's where our next step is. Counsel Clifford? You move that, second by Counsel Gaffney? Any further discussion? Counsel Seven, then Counsel Ingram, and then Gaffney?
Sorry, thank you. So just to clarify, we're not giving direction for a targeted taxation impact for the projects at this time?
There's nothing saying that you can't, but taking from Counsel Clifford, I think it'd be wise, and I'll invite our CIO forward again. I think it would be wise to have that fulsome discussion with the entire council present. But certainly, I'm not opposed to a comment at this time, if me be.
No, I appreciate that. I just I guess my comment is around if a motion needs to be modified, or just to reflect that we'll be discussing this at the next meeting, or.
Perhaps allow the CIO to come forward again.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor Ritzma. So what I'm suggesting after hearing the input is you could have a discussion today on some of this, or if you wanted to hold, we could schedule a Special Finance and Labor Relations Committee meeting, so that all members of council, and we would survey and find a date where everyone could meet, and take that approach, and have it on a separate night, rather than the Mondays where that does not work for everybody. So if that is something you're interested in, staff can just simply take that away, and we will poll you and get the dates that work for everybody.
Okay. Thank you, no, I'm in agreement with that, I just wanted to clarify, so thank you.
Thank you, Counsel Seven. Counsel Clifford, I believe you had your hand up, and Counsel Ingram?
It's been answered, thank you.
Thank you. And I had one other councillor, was it Counsel Ingram? Thank you.
Thank you, if I can just either ask for clarification or make a friendly amendment that the Proposed 2021 Budget Schedule be endorsed in principle with the direction that staff look at those dates other than perhaps all Tuesdays?
Certainly, and the mover, Counsel Clifford, and second, or Counsel Gaffney, are you open to that amendment? Thank you very much. Any other comments, questions? Before I call the question? Because you're correct, Counsel Clifford, it is it's going to require a lot of discussion, and it's going to be some major decisions being made, as the CIO indicated, not only for the upcoming 2020, but a number of years going forward. Counsel Gaffney?
So, Mr. Chair, are we just endorsing Items One and Two right now with some direction on whether we want to have a special meeting with the committee? Or do we want to have our next meeting for Items Three and Four two weeks from today?
I think what we'll do is allow that information to go back to staff and let them come back with the ideas of what possible dates we could have for a finance committee meeting. So I think the staff recommendation that is there can stand as it is, I do believe.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Chair.
Any further discussion? And certainly, we will be polled as to when is best for us to meet, and hopefully, as a combined council or a total council. So I call the question, all in favor? Opposed if any, and that's unanimous. Thank you very much. Moving down to 7.8, and this is regarding new service manager social housing directives. And there is a staff recommendation that council receives this information report with respect to the following 2020 Service Managers' Social Housing Directives, and they're listed in your agenda. And it goes on to state that council acknowledges the following 2013 Service Manager's Social Housing Directives to be rescinded with the 2020 directives coming into effect, and those are listed as well in your agenda. A mover for that, Counsel Gaffney and Counsel Vasilakos will second that discussion. Counsel Henderson?
I just wanted to double check that everybody that's on Trail Works right now, and anybody that's thinking of signing up, that needs a little bit of hand up. Is it pretty clear out there for people to understand that, you know, a lot of people are used to you have three times you can refuse a housing, but now it's only one time, like all the different changes that are happening? Like, I'm just wondering, like, is it on the website, how people find out about it? I mean, I know we're hearing about it, we've got the report, but I'm not sure how many people are actually going into the council agenda today and reading that report and seeing all the changes. I just don't want to have people caught off guard and, you know, worried about how this is going to work. And I know it comes down from the provincial government, but, you know, it's I had mentioned it to somebody that about the one-time refusal now, and they were shocked. They had no idea. So I just don't want people caught off guard.
Perhaps I'll send it over to the Director of Social Services to address that. Ms. McElroy?
Yes, through your worship, I'm going to have the manager of housing speak about our communication strategies with the rollout of these legislatures.
Thank you.
Thank you through you, Mr. Worship. The the timing, we've brought this forward to you with the directives now. The actual changes to the waitlist do not take effect until January 1, 2021. And that's why we've brought it to you ahead of time, six months, because over the next six months, we will be doing a diligent communication campaign, which will include sending everybody on the waitlist a letter and to update their application form. We will be updating the website, and we will be sending a lot of communications out, doing some educational sessions with our community partners as well. Thank you.
Thank you, Counsel Vasilakos.
I know that these directives are we have to do them because it comes from the province, but I'm going to reiterate my concerns that I had at Social Services Subcommittee and previous meetings, that some of these directives are just shuffling challenges from one department to another without actually dealing with some of the underlying causes and underlying reasons. So I still I still struggle a little bit with understanding what will be accomplished if if these directives are followed strictly. And I know that we've had conversations, and I know staff are very careful not to create other challenges other places, but I can't help but think that the province kind of missed the mark on some of this, because in the absence of additional resources in other areas, this will just cause problems.
Thank you, Counsel Vasilakos. Any further comments or questions? Seeing none, it's been moved and seconded, the staff recommendation. I will call the question, all in favor? Opposed of any, and that's unanimous. Thank you. Item 7.9 With regards to the Appointment of Municipal Bylaw Enforcement Officer, and the staff recommendation is that council amend Bylaw 60-2003 as amended to appoint Greg Rabe as a municipal bylaw enforcement officer for the Corporation of the City of Stratford commencing July 20, 2020. A mover for that, Counsel Bunting will move that, second by Counsel Ingram, thank you. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor? Opposed of any, and that's unanimous, thank you. Moving down to Item 710 Resolution With regards to the Extended Patio 2020 Follow-Up Report. And there is a staff recommendation that the report titled Extended Patios 2020 Follow-Up Report be received for information. Counsel Gaffney? Are you moving that, Counsel Gaffney?
I am, your worship, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, and a second for that. Counsel Henderson, thank you. Discussion, Counsel Vasilakos, then Burback?
I actually want to see, I think that we have to be a little more flexible in what we're offering for. I realize that some of these alternative patio configurations aren't going to be long-term. They could be just for the season. Some of the rules around having it contiguous will expire, but there may be a lot of businesses who want to take advantage of this short-term ability to do this, are willing to actually make this, create the space, and take on the additional costs of insurance. Because in some ways, going with the boardwalk and taking the boardwalk pedestrian, it the Economic Recovery Task Force picked winners and losers in that, and left some things out. And I am a little concerned about public dollars being used to support some businesses, and then other businesses being left out. And so if we don't come up with a flexible way to allow some businesses to use these alternatives, the province has changed the rules on allowing service to cross pedestrian right-of-way, et cetera. So I'm just looking at what I'm seeing coming out of the Economic Recovery Task Force, and I still haven't quite got a handle on how they're dealing with equity and equal access to funding for some of these activities to the businesses that are looking for it. And so I don't know that I just want to receive this for information and not have an additional conversation about how we could actually help some of those businesses that are willing to do some of these alternative patios.
Thank you, Counsel Vasilakos. Counsel Burback, and then Counsel Gaffney and Ingram?
Thank you, yes, Counselor Vasilakos brought up exactly what I was going to talk about. I do feel like certain downtown businesses, just because of where they're situated and the parking situation in front, for instance, on Wellington Street and along Market Square, the situations are different, and the recommended boardwalk isn't really ideal for those situations. So I feel like we need to be making solutions that the businesses along those areas can somehow still benefit from this patio program and not incur the extra expenses of things like insurance. So, I mean, there must be some creative ways that it can be done. I mean, we're talking about a difference, if you're thinking about the curb height difference. I mean, there's a possibility of creating a wooden deck, much similar to the boardwalks, and putting that on the parking space, thus eliminating any height difference. So I, yeah, I would strongly recommend that we would make sure that every business that really wants to take advantage of this program can somehow do so in a safe way, but that they aren't restricted just because of where their business happens to be, or the parking in front of it. So I, yeah, I'm not sure how that goes in with this recommendation, but, yeah, I would like to see more creativity, either I'm not sure if it's from the task force or if it's from staff working with individual businesses to make it work.
So to that end, Counsel Burback, I'm just wondering whether there is in there somewhere a referral back to staff to come back with a report around those restaurants that perhaps don't fit that mold that we currently have, and bring it back to our next meeting? Is that where you're going with that discussion?
Yes, that that would be appropriate, I think. If somehow we can reach out to, I mean, I do know there are a couple of businesses who have put forward some different ideas, and perhaps they weren't, they don't fit well, or they don't work, but I would really like to see staff working with those individual owners to get some sort of satisfactory patio space for them to use as well.
Just if there is a mover for a referral of this item, is there a second for that? Back to staff. Counsel Vasilakos, you have your hand, or? Just unmute yourself there.
Yeah, not for a referral, because it's yet another referral. Like, really, what I would like to do is to approve this, the possibility or the option of having an alternative patio where you can actually continue to have the pedestrian right-of-way where it currently is, and to allow patios to actually be on the other side, very much like Cafe Toronto, very much like New York City's doing. I think we should just approve that in principle and allow staff and the flexibility to work with different owners on how that could happen. I think council's I think council's role here shouldn't be to constantly be referring it back to staff for ideas. We should just be saying, we are okay with these alternative methods, and if a business could come with a way to do it safely and that fits, then staff have the ability to actually make those decisions from, you know, a details of how it works.
Thank you. So before I go on to Counsel Gaffney, Ingram, Seven, and Henderson, I just pressed a few of the concerns or questions that you've had.
Can you say that again?
Can you say that again?
Pardon me?
Can you say that again? We lost.
Just before we go on and I know we had yourself, Counselor Gaffney, Ingram, Seven, and Henderson wanting to respond or ask questions. I just thought it would be appropriate this time with the dialogue that's going on to allow Ms. Thompson to go forward, come forward and and maybe bring some more understanding to this.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor Ritzma. So I just wanted to speak briefly to this. So the the task force was set up and they have been channeling all of the great ideas and this one with the boardwalk extensions plus the patio extensions came through that task force. There is funding attached to it for those projects that fit within that model. We all can appreciate that not every business is going to be able to benefit from that particular model because of their certain circumstances, the infrastructure that's in front. So certainly we can take back this different model of a patio extension where the patio is right in the parking spaces and that the sidewalk is remains free. Staff have looked at it. The task force has looked at it. We have some concerns with it. It is not a preferred or recommended model. And secondly, there is not funding available for this particular model. The model that came through from task force and which was supported by the city initiatives team had funding attached for it for the the boardwalks. So I will say we we know that there are some unique situations there. There are, you know, challenges to all of those and not everyone was going to fit within this particular solution. And for some, there may not be a workable solution that can be funded. Thank you.
So I'm going to go back to my list of counselors with questions or comments and I'm going to go to Counselor Gaffney, please.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I just wonder if I could get some better understanding of what we're talking about. We haven't talked about specifics. If I can get some examples, just so I have a better understanding of what's being discussed right now. Please.
Mr. St. Louis, are you available?
I am, Mr. Chair. So so the option B that was referred back to the city initiatives team and the task force was the idea of having the patio in the parking spots and having a walkthrough still available on the sidewalk. The difference from the initial report was that the walkway was in the parking spots. In this case, as per the picture that was provided, the seating is in the parking spot, so next to.
Counselor Ingram.
Thank you. So I I have a couple of points, if I may. So for perhaps to start off with with Mr. St. Louis, I wonder if any there's been any advancement in terms of coming up with creative solutions for those businesses that are not able to get that boardwalk extension. And specifically, there are some on Wellington Street. There are some on Marketplace. There's also some corner properties where there's no no available parking spaces because they are on a corner and therefore can't get those boardwalk extensions. So I'm wondering if any advancement has been come up, has has resulted in a creative solution as of yet.
Through the chair, so the the quick answer is no. The the role of the city initiatives team is to evaluate ideas that come from the task force. The task force then gets their ideas from the public or the people that want to generate those ideas. So it's not the role of the city initiatives team at this point to specifically evaluate each idea. Not such a bad idea, but that's not been our role.
Hold up. Question, Counselor Ingram?
Yeah, well, I still have a couple, actually.
Yeah, go ahead.
So then is there somebody on staff that is looking into these these individual and unique one-off situations if it's not the the job of the task or the initiative team?
So I'm not sure I'm the right person to answer that, but again, I don't believe there's anybody researching those specific ideas.
Just if if I may, I think Ms. Thompson can address that that question.
Thank you.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor Ritzma. So last week, we did receive contact from a couple of businesses that were facing the challenges that they did not fit within the boardwalk extension or the patio extension models because, again, of their unique situations. So we have reached out and we are setting up a meeting to have a discussion. I know that some of those business owners have been discussing with members of council and other in the in the community as well. So we are hoping to set up that discussion. And as I said, we were open to having the discussion, not sure that we can find a solution for them for every unique situation, but we are looking into it.
Thank you. And then just another another thought for council to consider. For these unique situations, Ms. Thompson has been quite clear that there is no funding attached to any solution that may come up. I would like us to consider waiving any sort of permit fees for those unique situations because I think it does actually put them at a disadvantage given just based on their location, actually. So I I think that's, I think that would be an easy do for us should that come forward.
Yes, and to that end, looking at the clerk and the CAO, they've identified that all the way, all those permit fees have been waived.
Thank you.
Thank you. I'm moving down to Counselor Seven, then Counselor Henderson and Counselor Basilakos. Counselor Seven.
Thank you. I just had two points, really. I feel like we're having, I feel like we had this this very similar discussion recently and and, you know, it was sort of split then and I don't think, I'm not sure how that falls under under something being, I mean, this is not exactly the same, but we we discussed this and we and we voted and moved forward and so. But I also think my second point, I guess, is we have a task force, we have a city initiative team that are that are, I think, are doing an excellent job where there's there's communication open to to businesses that that want to to come forward with ideas and and work with the initiative team and cities and the task force. So I think I I just don't want to to take what's really working and then, in my opinion, working well and and sort of intervene, you know, when they've been doing, they've been doing a fine job. So that's just my thoughts on that.
Thank you, Counselor Seven. So I have Counselor Henderson, Basilakos, and then Clifford. Counselor Henderson.
My question was answered. Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Basilakos.
So I I just want to make a comment with respect to, there is, so even though they say there's no money, there's money that's been given to Economic Recovery Task Force and this money, but it's public funds. And so we have to be able to have some level of accountability for how public funds are spent. And if what's coming from the, if what comes from the public and goes through the tax force and then gets the city initiatives team, if those, if those ideas leave businesses out of economic recovery, then we're essentially saying that we've set up a system that allows for bonusing, where some businesses by virtue of luck of where they happen to be situated in our downtown area are getting the lion's share of the economic recovery dollars. And that's where I go back to equity, where somewhere in this Economic Recovery Task Force, they have to have some policy procedure accountability built into it that doesn't pick winners and losers with our businesses. That if they do come up with something that is working really well for some businesses but is leaving some businesses out, then there does need to be some onus on them to flag that they have created a situation where some businesses are losing out and then creatively come up with ways that they can actually support those other businesses as well. Or else, again, I see this as picking winners and losers and it is tax dollars. It's not city. It's not municipal tax dollars, but it's still tax dollars that are going to help some businesses and not others. And so I just want to sort of reiterate my concerns around us having set up a process that we have businesses that pay the equivalent taxes, municipal taxes, and they're being left out by virtue of something they had no control over. And so, again, this, we've set this up so this rests on the Economic Recovery Task Force. So I would like to send it back to them and say they have they have a challenge. And if they didn't, they didn't realize there'd be unintended consequences, that's that's fine. But now that they know there are, what are their plans for those other businesses?
Thank you. And I'll ask Ms. Thompson to come forward to address a few of those points.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor Ritzma. So yes, those are valid points and we can take that back to the task force. They did apply for grant funding. There are parameters around that application for which they must use and account for those public funds. But certainly we can get an update from the task force on the status of the projects and what eligible projects there are. And again, the key thing is that individual businesses are not eligible to benefit from these grant application funds, but we can get more information from the task force on it. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Thompson, and Counselor Clifford.
Yeah, a couple of things. As we know, the province announced today the step three that our restaurants and bars can open inside. So I wonder if that's going to affect any any of these requests. The other thing, I'm just wondering, are there any of these people that are refusing the boardwalk or is it always because of location? Like Parkard Square, I don't know. It seems it could be a place we could be, like we could have a boardwalk. So I'm asking, are any any of these requests, are they against the boardwalk or is it impossible to have a boardwalk, a boardwalk at all of these establishments?
And and to that end, I'm looking to the CAO if she wishes to address that question.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor Ritzma. Certainly, we can take that back. I am aware that not every restaurant in the downtown has applied for an outdoor patio or for an extension or for the boardwalk extension, but I can get additional information for you as to who has applied and been approved.
Thank you. Counselor Gaffney and then Counselor Burbak.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I find myself in the unenviable position of agreeing both with Kathy and Cody. But but to that, to that end, there's no city council representative or representatives on the task force, is there?
No, I don't believe so.
Should we be looking at that possibility or is that sort of outside the mandated things?
I'll miss, let Ms. Thompson address that.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor Ritzma. So the city initiatives team was one of two, sorry, three other teams that were set up under the city's emergency control response plan. And our emergency control plan is in place for when there is a declared emergency. So it is set up under that as an operations type function. It does not have council representation on it because, again, it is set up under the emergency control group. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Burbak.
Thank you. Yes, so I'm going to circle back around to my first point, which was, I I think it's an issue of fairness and I'm wondering if that the program as it's set up, could it have within it the flexibility to adjust slightly? In other words, we're going to put a boardwalk somewhere like Market Square. It may look a little different than the one that sits on the parallel parking spots, but can we not have a little bit of flexibility in the design within that program so that these things don't have to come back to council? And they would be, it would be fairly offered to all businesses, but not, you know, this is a separate program for you and you have to pay for it, whereas everybody else gets this free program. So what I'm asking for is flexibility within the program that already exists to take the design and maybe tweak it, not change it up. Maybe it needs to have a different angle or a different, I don't know, a different width of the boardwalk or in some way can we have the creativity within what already exists and not have it be quite so rigid so that it is more accessible to all the businesses.
And to that end, I'll ask Mr. Fo to come forward.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor Ritzma. So currently with our business license by law and specifically the elements of an outdoor patio, our bylaw only permits outdoor cafes over the area of municipal sidewalk. So it doesn't actually permit them in areas like a parking space or a parking lot or whatnot. So we would likely need to amend the bylaw in order to permit that. With respect to the boardwalk extensions, the task force identified that 20 could be built and we are rapidly approaching that number and we do have additional applications that we're reviewing. So unfortunately, we couldn't take the boardwalk as is and build it to create a patio. If it was going to be approved, it would have to be similar to the photo that's attached in the report. So you would place the tables and chairs in the parking spaces, but you have to add cement blocks facing oncoming traffic to prevent vehicles from being able to drive into the patio. And then there's also additional items such as like those cement flower pots. So it wouldn't be necessarily a boardwalk that you would build. You would just add fencing and then these cement pieces. And as the CAO identified, unfortunately, at this time, there just isn't funding for those pieces. So if it was going to be approved, it would likely be the business who would have to fund them. And we did note that that could be expensive at this time. But it's mainly, we would likely need either a temporary use by law or some other mechanism to permit the actual patios and spaces. And then, as noted in the report, we would likely require a $5 million liability insurance policy as well. And that also increases the cost for businesses as compared to the $2 million liability insurance that we currently require. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Fo. Do I have another? I think I saw another hand from council. No. So I I know we we've had some good conversation and I just. Yep. And I know that the CAO has heard and and she will certainly continue to to look at those individual businesses that are being met under this model, but certainly she is hearing it loud and clear in the chamber. Counselor Basilakos.
I was just, I was just going to say that it would be interesting, as I think the CAO mentioned it, but I just want to reiterate that I would like to hear from the Economic Task Force, not only on what projects have been approved, but how they, how they are receiving feedback and how they're ensuring equity for different businesses. I would like to get a sense of how they're managing that because, as I said, to me, it feels a little unequal at this point.
Thank you, Counselor Basilakos. And that report will come back at the next council meeting on July 27. Counselor Clifford.
Yeah, I I think that's a problem like July 22. By that time, I think if we're going to do something, we have to do it a lot more promptly than that. So I think if we're going to have a report, it should be within, like by Friday or next week, early next week. So that's just my thought.
I'm I'm looking at the CAO because obviously they have a lot on their plate. Ms. Thompson, do you want to address that or do you want? So as the CAO has indicated, she's going to relay the urgency as identified via council or from council to to the task force. So your your point is well taken, Counselor Clifford. Counselor Henderson.
I just wanted to bring up, my understanding of what's happening on Friday is that restaurants will be allowed to have, I think, 50 people in their restaurants as long as they can social distance them. So that might help with some of the smaller ones.
Thank you, Counselor Henderson. So there's, there is some work, some that's going back to the task force and back to to staff. We do have a motion on the floor and that we received the information with regards to the extended patios. Any further discussion before I call the question? Seeing none, all in favor? Opposed if any? Can I see that vote again? All in favor? Opposed if any, and that's unanimous. Thank you. So moving down to item 711, resolution with regards to So moving down to item 711, a resolution with regards to call to recycle battery agreement. And there is a staff recommendation that the corporation of the city of Stratford enter into an agreement with the call to recycle Canada Incorporated for the collection and recycling of used batteries and that the mayor and the city clerk or their respective delegates be authorized to sign the agreement. A mover for that. Counselor Vasilakos seconded by Counselor Gaffney. Discussion. Seeing none, all in favor? Opposed, if any, and that's unanimous. Thank you. Moving down to item 7.12 with regards to the Erie Street sidewalk tender for contract. And that's T 20020-30. And there is a staff recommendation that council approved the award of the Erie Street sidewalk contract to Vista Contracting Limited at a total tender price of $390,767.56. That the council approved the an additional budget of $90,000 for the sidewalk with funding provided from the Trails Bike and Pedestrian Master Plan 2020 capital budget.
I'd gladly move that.
Yes, I was going to say, Counselor Henderson, I have your name right beside it. So seconded by Counselor Clifford, do I see your hand there, Counselor Clifford? There you go. Any more discussion on that?
I just want to say our accessibility committee will be very pleased to see this being done.
Beautiful. Thank you, Counselor Henderson, for your your persistence on this. Thank you very much. Counselor Burbak.
Thank you. Yes, I just had a question about the funds coming from the bike and pedestrian master plan. I was under the impression that that was going to be used for the crosswalk at Huron, and maybe I'm wrong. My memory doesn't serve me right, but I also am wondering about whether that that crosswalk is going ahead. I've had some people ask me this week about it. So yeah, if we could have an update also on the Huron Street crossing, crosswalk.
Mr. Dlovic, are you on the line?
Yeah, yeah, through the chair. That was funds from last year's budget for the Huron Street crosswalk. So those funds are separate and we are going ahead with that project this year. I know it was questioned earlier whether we about when we got the money for the Huron Street road reconstruction. And we said, no, we're still going ahead with the crosswalk for this year.
Thank you for that question, Counselor Burbak. Any other questions? It's been moved and seconded. Counselor Henderson.
How soon will it start?
Ms. Pinto or Mr. Dlovic?
I will leave that to Ms. Pinto.
Yes, through the chair, we will be looking to start at the beginning of August. We are just giving some time for white men to to get their utility installed as well as coordinate with the railway authority, which might take some time. So around the beginning of August, we will be getting started, hope to be getting started.
Thank you, and thank you for your work on this. Any other questions or comments before I call the question? Seeing none, all in favor? Opposed, if any, and that's unanimous. Moving on to 7.13, the resolutions, and this is with regards to temporary sign by law exemptions. And there's a staff recommendation that the Festival Marketplace Mall be granted and is an exemption from obtaining a sign permit for the use of two portable signs, 2.9 meter squared or 32 feet squared with color until December the 31st, 2020. That an exemption from obtaining a sign permit be granted for banners, feather flags, and lawn signs until December 31st, 2020, provided that the signs are located on private property and one meter back from the property line. That the banners on railings of boardwalks, use of sidewalk signs, and the use of signs indicating curbside pickup in the downtown core be granted an exemption from obtaining a sign permit until December 31st, 2020. And that the exemptions from obtaining the sign sign permit does not circumvent other provisions of the sign bylaw. A mover for that. Moved by Counselor Burbak, seconded by Counselor Ingram. Thank you. Discussion. Counselor Ingram.
Thank you. I just wanted to be sure that the banners used on the railings for the boardwalks are are going to be somehow attached so that as cars are driving by and and there's wind or whatever, the banners are not going to be flying up and hitting the vehicles as they're going past or anything like that. I want to make sure that there's some provisions in the sign bylaw for.
Counsel, I mean, Counselor, Mr. Dlovic.
Yeah, through the chair. Yes, we will still retain the right if there's safety issues with all that, but we'll definitely. I think that's why we have that last provision and the exemptions that you can't be exempt from other things in the permit. The permit talks about safety, sightlines, those type of things in our bylaws. So they would still have to follow those provisions to ensure any of these signs that are being installed is done safely.
Thank you, Counselor Ingram. Counselor Henderson.
Yes, I had some people from that have accessibility issues and they had concerns about more things being put like in the boardwalk area because they were afraid of hitting it with their wheelchair or people stopping to look at it. And they said they were already finding sometimes what happens at, say, one end of the boardwalk or the other. People are sort of standing chatting there and then they're having trouble getting around. So just some things to be aware of, watch out for.
Thank you. Any other comments or questions? Seeing none, I will call the question. All in favor? Opposed, if any, and that's unanimous. Moving down to item 7.14, resolution with regards to temporary washroom facilities during COVID-19, 2020. And the staff recommendation that council approve the request to install temporary washroom facilities at the Cooper Site parking lot from July the 15th, 2020 to September the 6th, 2020 in conjunction with Movies Under the Stars Parking Lot Edition Initiative. And that council approved the request to install a temporary washroom facility in the festival parking lot until October the 31st, 2020, should the task force determine there is a need in this location. A mover for that? Counselor Henderson, thank you. Counselor Burbak will second that. Questions? Counselor Vasilakos, then Henderson and Clifford.
And just for clarity, these washrooms, cleaning and maintenance of these washrooms will paid through, will be paid through the task force funding? It's, it doesn't fall onto city staff to do that? I'm just thinking about Movies Under the Stars. They're going to be there outside of the times that the movies are running. Who's responsible for keeping them clean throughout the day or on times when the movies aren't running?
Thank you. Thank you. Mr. St. Louis, are you there?
Yes, through the chair, the as in the report, it's the responsibility of the task force for making sure that those facilities are sanitized and kept clean through the times.
Thank you. Counselor Henderson and Counselor Clifford.
Yes, I was thinking about this from our earlier discussion, you know, making sure that we have at least one accessible washroom. If there's no difference in price and renting, why don't we just make them all accessible? Because we do have larger people, taller people that are people just with walkers or canes or parents with children, like if there's really no difference in price, why not just make them all accessible?
Mr. St. Louis.
Through you, the chair, I will take that idea back to.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Counselor Clifford.
Yeah, I was just going to ask, like Queen Street and in the Cooper Site, is there a concern for vandalism, like for people turning them over and whatnot? Are they secured down or can I have some information on that?
Mr. St. Louis.
Through the chair, certainly vandalism is a concern. And I'm sure there's a method to make sure that they are kept secure. That's probably the best they can do.
Thank you. Counselor Ingram.
Thank you. And in terms of the Queen Street parking lot, what are they going to use as their evaluation criteria as to determine the need? Is it just the number of requests for washrooms or what other evaluation criteria are they using?
Mr. St. Louis, can you address that?
Through the chair, I believe it's going to be on feedback. The concern is that the almond washrooms are too far. And when they get that feedback from the Elsa Fescro program that's on Tom Patterson Island, they'll decide whether they're going to install washrooms.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments? Seeing none, there is a staff recommendation that's been moved and seconded. I will call the question. All in favor? Opposed, if any, and that, thank you, Counselor Ingram. Was that an opposed or was that, let's call that again, all in favor? All in favor? Thank you, and that's unanimous. Thank you. Moving on to item number eight, business.
That was, that was not unanimous, Mr. Q.
I am sorry, there wasn't a post, thank you. I apologize. To oppose, I apologize. Looking down to item eight, business for which previous notice has been given. And there's none scheduled, nine, notice of intent, none scheduled. Reading of the bylaws, the bylaws require first and second, third and final readings. And could be taken collectively upon unanimous vote of council. Item 10.1 is built for zero Canada agreement.
We're losing you, Martin. We can't hear you.
Sorry about that, Counselor Clifford. Thank you. So the the items that are being voted on here that can be voted on collectively are item 10.1. Is that better, Bonnie? Is that better?
Yes, thank you.
Okay, 10.1, built for zero Canada agreement. 10.2, agreement for collection and recycling of used batteries. 10.3, acceptance of tender for Erie Street sidewalk project. And 10.4, the appointment of a municipal bylaw officer. And those can be taken collectively upon unanimous vote by council. Counselor Burbak will move that. Counselor Vasilakos will second. All in favor? Hold them up so I know, yes, it is unanimous. Thank you. So we are moving on to the first and second reading of those. Moved by Counselor Seven, seconded by Counselor Bunty. Questions? All in favor? Counselor Vasilakos, are you going to vote on that one? Thank you. And that's unanimous. And third and final, Counselor Gaffney and Counselor Clifford, all in favor? And that's unanimous. Thank you very much. We're moving on to item number 11. That's the consent agenda. Counselor Vasilakos, did you have your?
Well, you were just cutting out, but I, while I have you, I would like to consider us supporting the resolution on universal basic income. I think it's 202064. I'm just going to point out that the Huron Public Health has also endorsed the concept of instituting universal basic income as a way to address social determinants of of health. But I think also in a post-COVID recovery, this can be a long, long time. And it makes sense to to at least consider it at upper levels of government.
A seconder for support of 2020-064, and that's Counselor Burbak. Thank you. Discussion. Counselor Clifford.
Yeah, I don't, I'm not 100% against it, but I'd have to get a lot more info on it. What I'm concerned about to begin with, I want people to have jobs. I know we all want people to have jobs, but when they talked about this last time in Ontario, I talked to a family. They had a daughter that was partway through university. And he was saying, that would be a great program for her if she isn't going to complete her university. So and I went online and there are some concerns like that. And the other thing, I would want it to be a short term, like six months. And they talked about that too, just to see how it's going to work and is it going to affect people on Ontario work? So it's easy for us to say we are against it or we're in favor of it. But there's a lot of questions to be answered before I would be in favor of this right now.
Counselor Vasilakos.
I'm just going to point out that that this endorsement is for the governments to actually explore the feasibility of it and possibly do pilots. So this endorsement is precisely to answer the question that Counselor Clifford is asking.
Counselor Seven.
Thank you. I just wanted to echo some Counselor Clifford's comments about, I just feel like I'm not opposed to it, but I don't feel like I, I mean, it's not at all a municipal thing. So I just, I have some reservations for sure. So I just don't understand it enough to, I haven't given it enough thought really to consider it fully.
Any other discussion, comments, questions? So we do have a mover and a seconder to support CA-2020-064. All in favor? Opposed, if any, and that's three opposed. Thank you, and that's carried. Any other items from the consent agenda? Counselor Ingram.
Thank you. I would like us to consider supporting CA 2020-063, which is the support for long-term care.
Seconded for that, Counselor Gaffney. Thank you. Any discussion on that item? So it's been moved and seconded of support by council for CA-2020-063. Seeing no questions, all in favor? And that's unanimous. Thank you. Any other items from the consent agenda? Seeing none, we're going to move down to new business. Looking for new business. Counselor Ingram, Seven, Burbak and Clifford. Go ahead.
Thank you. I'm just going to get my screen up here. I have four items and they're basically just status update items that I have been looking for since, from pre-COVID type items. So the first one is the status of 39 George Street, which is the vacant space just adjacent to Bars Chocolate. And I'm wondering if we could get an update on that, please.
Mr. Dlovic.
Through the chair, that's actually, Mr. Fo is taking care of that now.
And Ms. Bossy, I do not believe so. Mr. Fo can come forward?
Through you Deputy Mayor, staff are in the process of working on a report and I'm hoping to have a further update in the next week.
Thank you. My second one is the status of the Pride Crosswalk that was referred to staff in January of this year.
That's me, the chair. Yes, I have been working with the people from Pride. We were working on the colors. We were getting a number of intersections identified that they were interested in in narrowing it down to one. And we were in the process of getting quotes, but with the onset of COVID-19 and the fact that they had a private sponsor to help pay for the costs, they've asked that be it be put off until things with COVID-19 subside because they want to make a celebration out of this. So they they made the request that it be put off at this time until things improve.
Thank you. Number. Sorry, yes, I have two more. Number three is the status of the accessibility committee's request to investigate the possibility of adding on-street accessible parking spaces on both Erie Street and Oak Street.
Through the chair, that is going to be done in the month of August. We've put it on the list with our concrete contractor. And that's when we'll, we plan on having that work done.
Perfect. Thank you. And my final one is the status on the climate emergency petition that was received in September of last year.
Ms. Defoe will come forward for that one.
Thank you.
So through you Deputy Mayor Ritzma, as you recall, we did receive the petition and then council passed a motion to refer back to staff the development of a three-month plan as well as consideration for the 2021 budget. Unfortunately, due to COVID-19, that project was put on hold. Staff in the clerk's office have been working to update the website with some additional information and have been working on a report. It's my intent that we will resume this project likely in September and may have something back to you by October.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Fo. And Ms. Counselor Seven, then Burbak and Clifford.
Thank you. I guess my my comments are around the announcements today about stage three. I just wanted to, I guess, for everything, but particularly as a as a parent of somebody with very young children. I know playgrounds are permitted to be open on Friday and I'm just trying to trying to represent the parents out there and hoping that we can get them open, you know, ideally Friday, but if not as soon as possible. I just wanted to to sort of put that out there and then if staff can do the best they can around that. if staff can do the best they can around that, that would be great. And my other comments are around the announcement about the masks. I just wanted some clarification, because I'm just, the language is somewhat a little bit confusing to me. It says, and I didn't know if we would need to step in as council, like other municipalities have, to make them actually mandatory, or if, just for clarification, if they will be mandatory? Because I'm just going to read, it says, "We'll require business owners to implement a policy for the use of non-medical masks or face covering, including the expectation that people entering will wear a face covering." So I didn't know if we as council, if we want masks to be mandatory in public places, need to do that as a council, or what the process would be for that.
Thank you, and I'll ask Ms. Thompson to come forward to address that.
Yes, thank you, Deputy Mayor Ritzma. So certainly, this is guidance that has come out from the Medical Officer of Health for Huron Perth Public Health. It applies to commercial establishments and all the other lists of businesses included in there, and we encourage all businesses to read that. It does also apply to municipal offices, so we will be following this guidance. I believe it is not mandatory, but this is the guidance that we will be following. We have been previously following the guidance of the Medical Officer of Health, and I believe that this community, as all others, have been well-served by that guidance. If you note in the letter, she does explain why other methods weren't used, but I think this is a good approach that puts the balance that if people cannot continue to do their physical distancing, that masks are another layer of protection in there. I am not speaking on behalf of the Medical Officer of Health, I would not presume to do so, but we are supportive of this guidance that has come out, and we are working to put those guidances in place for our offices here, as well as other places that they are applicable. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Thompson. Ms. Counselor Vassalakis, did you have a comment to be made on that particular item?
I think Counselor Seven maybe had something. I just wanted to actually maybe, because maybe everyone doesn't quite understand the different approaches the different municipalities are taking. There are three ways that you can do mask mandates or requirements. One is to do a Section 22 order under the Health Promotion Protection Act. And Dr. Clausen has made it clear that the conditions in Huron Perth right now do not actually warrant a Section 22 order. It would be very difficult for her to justify that, and she has to actually meet certain requirements to do so. The other way of doing it is by municipal bylaw, and then you can have a municipal bylaw that requires it, and then it's enforceable by municipal bylaw officers, and you have to have an enforcement process in place. The difficulty with doing that in Huron Perth, or doing that, is that if each municipality in Huron Perth were to do it, it would be slightly different, and everybody takes a different approach. So that becomes problematic from an enforcement perspective as you cross boundaries. The third method is that, under the provincial emergency orders, the Medical Officer of Health has the authority to provide instruction to businesses, and the instruction is the way that Dr. Clausen has chosen. And there's a number of reasons for it, but what the instruction allows for is a best efforts and promotion. And it allows for education and a non-confrontational approach to getting people used to and modeling the behavior, and getting everybody to make mask-wearing more socialized. Because if and when we do have a need to make it mandatory and do harsher enforcement of it, we will have actually built up the ability to actually do so. And I was going to make a comment earlier about the idea of equity and fairness, because there are a lot of equities around mask-wearing, especially around the cost of masks and the cost of keeping them clean, and how many people need, and getting people to understand how to use them correctly. And so this current instruction allows us to build on that education and promotion from the health unit. The other thing that it allows the health unit to do is to remind businesses and people who are going to the businesses the hierarchy of efficacy. So, you know, staying home when you're sick, social distancing, really good hygiene, and masks all go together. So rather than doing a mask mandate in terms of just isolating masks on their own, it allows the health unit to remind businesses that it's a package, that no single is sufficient, and no single one is necessary, that it's all together. So I think that's the approach. And if this council chose to do a bylaw, it would require a significant amount of work to decide what that bylaw looks like.
Thank you, Counselor Vassalakis. I'm going to go back to Counselor Seven. Did you have anything addition before I want to move on here?
Yeah, thank you, and thank you, Counselor Vassalakis, for the background there. I just, I guess part of my comments and questions were for clarification for people watching, and also, I guess I personally feel that masks should be mandatory. I don't think, I don't feel, at this point, I'm prepared to try and pursue that, because I do trust the medical professionals and what's going on. They know quite a bit more than I do, obviously. But I guess, I guess the concerns come from, we do have clearly a lot of tourists coming from different regions that are out and about in the community, and I've heard from business owners downtown that they don't feel like they need to wear a mask when they're in Stratford, because we don't have any cases, and they're coming from places that are obviously not in the same stage even now as we are. And I would just like to, as everybody would, see us progressing forward. So I just sort of wanted to put that out there, so it's on council's mind as well, that if things progress, and things change, and we may be confronted with something that we have to make a choice like that, so that's all, thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Seven. So I have Counselor Burbak, Clifford, Vassalakis, Henderson.
I've got a question. Hart and I have a question on this exact thing, if that's possible.
Okay, go ahead, yes, thank you, Counselor Clifford.
What I'm wondering, is our transit included in that, our public transit? I haven't seen that specifically, but I think if it is, it's something we'd have to advertise a little bit.
Thank you, and I'll let Ms. Thompson come forward on that.
Yes, thank you, Deputy Mayor Ritzma. So as you read the guidance, you will note that public transit is included in there, and we are working through the details of that. And there will be messaging going out, so that the public is aware of the public health unit's guidance with respect to wearing masks. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Thompson. So I'm going to go back to my list, and Counselor Burbak.
Thank you. My question about the climate emergency was already asked, so I won't ask that. But in connection to that, there was a report done by the greenhouse gas researcher that we have, Rebecca Garlick. So I'm wondering if that is going to come forward at the same time as the climate emergency information, or how is that going to work?
Mr. Doolovic.
Through the chair, I've not been involved with Ms. Garlick on that.
Maybe I'll have the clerk come forward.
Through you, Deputy Mayor. I do believe Rebecca was working on a report, and I believe it was nearing completion prior to COVID-19. I will have to just check with her to see if her timing will work with ours, or if there is a way that we can bring it forward sooner or with our report. We will get back to you and provide you with an update on when that would be coming forward.
Perfect, thank you. The second item I had actually is a question for Mr. Doolick, and it's sort of a follow-up on my question earlier about the Huron Street crosswalk. I'm just wondering what the timing is for that being installed.
Through the chair, it should be going out to tender in the next couple of weeks, so I'll have to confirm staff as to the timing of that going out.
Great, thank you. And the last thing, some people have contacted me, wondering why it is that none of the fountains in the city are currently on. One at Memorial Gardens and a few other locations, all the fountains are not working right now, and people are missing them. So I'm just wondering if someone can answer that question.
Mr. Doolovic or Mr. St. Louis?
Through the chair, I don't have a response at this point. I believe, now that we're in stage three, that we can make sure those comments are comfortable.
We'll have that item go back to staff, and they'll come back with a response. Thank you very much. Anything else, Counselor Burbak?
Nope, that's it, thank you.
Thank you. I have Counselor Clifford, Vassalakis and Henderson.
I've asked my question, thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Vassalakis.
So my actual question or suggestion has to do with the mask issue, and one of, and the issue of equity and accessibility. And first of all, I want to talk about non-stigmatization. There are individuals in our community who cannot wear a mask. There are medical reasons why they cannot, and I think we have to really try hard to avoid the mask shaming that we see that's happening. And I just want to sort of make sure that this is, that when we are talking about masks, it's a positive promotional thing. And some of the, you know, the doctors that talk about some of the best ways to increase mask use, and one comment was, "Give it away, give them away like candy." And so I am hoping that we can, I'll just refer both to community services staff in terms of transit, and also to our social services staff that are in contact with some of our higher-risk families, and families that may not have access to masks. But then also, I'm thinking about SLA and how the city can promote mask-wearing by ensuring everyone has access to free masks if they need them. And I think that's going to be a really important thing as we move forward, because the one thing we don't want to do is exclude people from spaces that they have every right to be, and we don't want not having a mask to do that. So this is just more of a general referral back to all the different departments to think about how they can help people meet the requirements of the mask guidance.
Thank you, and I'm going to have Ms. Thompson come forward as well.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor Ritzma. Yes, so staff have already identified this as our concern also, and those discussions have already started with respect to other agencies in our community and where we can find some resources and identify best places so that those needs are identified and addressed. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Thompson, and Counselor Vassalakis, Counselor Henderson.
Is it me?
Yes, Counselor Henderson, yes.
I've had some people ask me about the River Drive and the closure every weekend. Their comments are that there's hardly anybody using it. I've been down a couple of times, I've seen some people, but I haven't seen a lot of people, which in some ways is a good thing, because you want to keep the social distancing. And I know we have said that we're going to get a report back, say, the end of August. I'm just wondering if we should maybe have a report back by the end of July to look at whether we should continue it in August? Or somebody, some people have suggested going every second weekend. That might be a bit confusing, but I'm just wondering, do we have any feel for the success of it yet?
Director St. Louis, response to that?
I think this is-
Mr. Doolovic.
Through the chair, we haven't been monitoring it actively, you know, and so we would, we haven't had staff out on the weekends to determine what the usage has been.
Thank you, Counselor Seven, I see your hand.
Yeah, I just wanted to echo Counselor Henderson's, I mean, comments. I go around by the river quite a bit, and the only time that it's ever, is ever more than a couple people on the road lakeside is Sunday nights. I think there's somebody playing music, and people are gathered there, and so then people are sitting on the sidewalk, and people are having a walk-around. And I have had several residents sort of echo their concerns that it's sort of deserted, and people are congregating more in the open areas of Lakeside. And they've also brought up the question around, how do we, you know, we're supposed to review at the end of August, but I don't know. I mean, based on what we're doing right now or the path we're taking, that's going to be strictly review based on, you know, sort of anecdotal and observations by council. We don't have any, we're not tracking any data, so we won't really know when it comes time to review how successful it's been. So those are just concerns, yeah, that I just wanted to echo. So we don't have, I'd like to see an earlier date to bring this up again, but obviously, that'll depend on council.
Thank you, Counselor Seven, and that's been referred back, and Mr. Doolovic indicated that they will be looking at that. So thank you very much, and Counselor Henderson as well. Sure, and Counselor Henderson, will you move for that to be referred back? Thank you, and Counselor Seven, will you second that? Thank you. So that's moved by Counselor Henderson, second by Counselor Seven, that a report be brought back with regards to the use of Riverside Drive. Counselor Ingram?
Thank you, yes, and just on that topic, then, if we're, depending on which way we go after this report comes back to us, perhaps the washroom in the Queen Street parking lot may not quite, we might want to hold off on that until we determine whether or not we're going to continue with the road closure on the weekends as well.
Thank you. Very, very well said. Counselor Burbak.
Thank you. Yeah, I just wanted to mention that there have been some individuals from Cycle Stratford who've collected some sort of unofficial data that perhaps I could pass out along to staff to have a look at, especially when, but they were looking at cycling numbers, they were looking at walking, and they were also looking at parking. So, yeah, there is some unofficial data there. And I would say, as a cyclist, it's a very quick end-to-end. So I know that a lot, like I use it often myself, but it's a whole one-minute of cycling. So surprisingly, quite a few people do use the stretch, but it's such a short piece that it's, you know, it's easy to miss.
Thank you. Counselor Vassalakis?
I was just going to say the same. Cycle Stratford had sent me some of their data as well, but then I also, it's hard to tell, because sometimes I've been down there, and there have been quite a few cyclists, and I've noticed, you know, I've been down there at least twice when families are unloading bicycles from the back of their minivan, and the kids are using it to like learn to ride their bikes. So there are some instances of that. So it's really, I mean, how it's being used and in what way it's being used, I've been there later in the evening when there's a lot of younger people like booting up and down on their bikes. And so, again, time of day seems to be really important, and I'm not sure how you gather all of that data. But Cycle Stratford did seem to do a pretty good job of just collecting some informal data.
Thank you. So that referral has been moved by Counselor Henderson, second by Counselor Seven. Counselor Seven, another question or comment?
Yeah, thank you, I just had a question. I mean, all the other councils' questions are sort of alluding to the same thing. I don't know, I'm just wondering how, without incurring overtime or something, how, I'm just curious how, what staff's plan would be to sort of have a, collect data or to gauge how it's being used? I'm just curious what the process would be for that.
Mr. Doolovic.
Yeah, through the deputy mayor, we do have some machines, one that does pedestrian counts, even our tubes could do for bicycles. So I will review with staff to see what equipment, and how we can use our equipment to do some monitoring up there.
Counselor Seven.
And thank you, and I guess my follow-up to that is we, again, for this program, we don't have any data to, that'll tell us whether or not it's an increase or decrease or remaining the same. So I just don't know how we will, because we didn't take any counts beforehand. We don't know how busy the pathway was before, so we don't know. We won't, we won't really be able to objectively say one way or the other, I don't think, because we don't have any baseline data, so.
Thank you, Counselor Gaffney, and then Counselor Vassalakis.
Thank you. I think that when all is said and done, it's going to be based, if this question comes back to us on whether we're going to continue the Riverside bicycling and pedestrian lane closures, it's not going to be based on period information, it's going to be based on our observations. And my observations have been that it's not very busy. So, you know, if that question comes back to us, that's what I'm going to base my decision on, is my personal observations, not on a bunch of information from staff, because, you know, that's just spending more money on on something that comes down to a personal observation and vote. So, thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Gaffney. Counselor Vassalakis?
I was just going to say that it would be actually really difficult to do a before-and-after and baseline and count afterwards because of all the confounding variables of whether whether school was in full lockdown, people told not to go out, summer starting, more visitors, like it really, truly to do like it isn't, this is really not amenable to a statistically significant, you know, sound study. It is really just taking counts and taking a guess. Again, because of all the different variables that went into before month and the after, it wouldn't matter anyways if we'd done counts beforehand, simply on all those other factors.
Thank you. So there is a motion, a referral motion on the floor, that this go back to staff to collect data with regards to the use of the River Drive during its closure. Counselor Seven?
All right, I'm just, I guess, I guess I'm just, I would rather see a referral for this to come back sooner to council and not, to be frank, not to waste staff's time with collecting data that's going to be ignored probably by most of council, so I would make a friendly amendment to the referral to just bring it back to council at the end of July rather than the end of August for review by council.
And Counselor Henderson, are you okay with that date prior to the end of July?
No, because it's coming back to August anyway. It's another six weeks of shutting the River Drive down if it's not accomplishing what we wanted it to accomplish. And I heard what Counselor Seven was saying about, we didn't have data before, but I'm sure the pedestrian count should be up compared to before, because only times people should be on the road is if they're crossing the road, and the odds of the of the counter being where they're going to cross from their cars to get to the sidewalk would probably be pretty low. And I'm not sure about that bike counts, whether, I'm not sure when they do this count, if they can tell which way the bike's going, if it's on the right side, if it's in the middle of the lane or not. I don't know if I can do that kind of data.
So that amendment hasn't been accepted. There is certainly a motion on the floor, so I am going to call the question for those. Counselor Gaffney?
Can you just reiterate what exactly we're voting on right now, please?
And I'll go back to the clerk on this. Yes. Yeah, the Do you want to come forward to the mic and see? I'll ask Ms. Defoe to come forward on.
Through you Deputy Mayor Ritzma. It was my understanding that the referral to staff was for staff to conduct an earlier review of the use of Lakeside Drive. So looking to Counselor Henderson, is there an expected date where you would like to see this review, or is it open-ended?
My idea was for the end of July, so that would give us, you know, almost a half a month of data. And it's been going for over half a month, right? So I would think by now, people, the residents in the city have gotten used to it, and they should be using it more. In the beginning, you were not going to get as many people, because it takes time for people to know about it, right? I just, as long as it's a success, then we should continue it, but if not, that many are using it, then we might as well open it back up. And as far as the washroom goes, I thought that had to do with the pods and people doing yoga and different things at the pods. That was why they were considering a washroom down there. And the festival parking lot, the most cars I've seen over this period of time, there's been two in there. Most time, there's nothing. I have never seen the parking spots below the festival ever filled. There's always been spots there, so like it, it sounds like in some ways it's working. I know we were, and there has been, especially on Sunday night, there's lots of cars in the Allman Arena there, because they're listening to that girl on her dog singing, right? But other than that, like everything seems to be working okay, but just wondering if it really is, because some people are complaining that, you know, it's shut down and they don't see anybody there, so, or very few.
Well, so through the clerk then, that there is a motion on the floor that that report come back by the end of July. And that's the motion on the floor. Any other comments or questions before I call the question? Seeing none, all in favor? Please hold your hand and leave it up so I can get a count one. And those opposed? So five in support, three opposed, and that's carried. Any other items under new business? Seeing none, we move to item 13, which is the confundatory bylaw, and is a, I'm looking for a motion for the first and second reading. Counselor Vassalakis and Counselor Bunty, all in favor? And that's unanimous. Third and final, Counselor Gaffney and Counselor Ingram, all in favor? And that's unanimous. And I'm looking down to the next regular council meeting will be July the 27th, and a motion to adjourn this afternoon's activities. Counselor Seven and Counselor Burbak, all in favor? And that's unanimous. Thank you, everybody.
Good night, everybody.